We'll bring the special assembly meeting to order for September 26, 2022. Mr. Bryson, would you do our land acknowledgement, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We want to take this opportunity to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on Klinkit land and to honor the indigenous people of this place. For more than 10,000 years, Alaska Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the Klinkit people. Konosheesh.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Madam Clerk, will you note the role, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a full assembly present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we don't have any special order of business tonight, so we'll go to public participation on non-agenda items. We had no one sign up on Zoom, and I think all we have is staff and the audience. So unless any of our staff wants to comment on non-agenda items, see no raised hands? All right, we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there any public request for consent agenda changes other than ordinances for introduction, which they all are today? Are there any assembly requests for consent agenda changes? Seeing none, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the consent agenda, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved, which brings us to public hearing. Madam Clerk, item four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, this is Mr. Smith, and I cannot hear anything in the room any further.
I also have lost sound for you folks.
Okay, we are gonna try and get, oops, I see them, though. They're nodding me. Mr. Smith can hear me.
I can hear you now.
All right.
The clerk, it just cut off when the clerk was speaking.
Okay, so it looks like we have them still with us. So we're gonna move onward. And I see Mahoga Doc too. Mahoga Doc, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
All right, perfect. So we have our folks with us. So since Madam Clerk is taking care of stuff, Mr. Deputy Manager, would you read item four and go with it?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The CBJ Lands Office has received an application from Chelsea and Brian.
I have to read the ordinance first, because Madam Clerk was busy.
Oh. Fair enough. This is ordinance 202249, an ordinance authorizing the manager to convey approximately one acre of city and borough Juneau property located near 3145 Fritz Code Road to Chelsea and Brian Mallor at fair market value. The CBJ Lands Office received an application from Chelsea and Brian Mallor, the owners of property located near 3145 Fritz Code Road. The Mallor property is an undeveloped lot that is adjacent to the city property being requested. Fair market value of the CBJ property has been determined by appraisal to be $2.53 per square foot for a total value of $110,000. I recommend you adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager. Is there any, well, apparently there's no members of the public, because nobody signed up, although I do see that we have Mr. Mallor on the Zoom. If we have questions for him, and we have Mr. Blydon in the room also, because we always will have questions for him, and I appreciate Mr. Blydon's patience with me, because I pestered him with questions all afternoon. Any questions from the Assembly? Okay, just so you know, my question was why an acre instead of just our usual thing. So Mr. Blydon, you want to answer that for the public, because that was unusual, that we're doing such a big parcel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we discussed earlier today, this seems like a large ask, a full acre of property. And then basically looking at topography and what they need to blast access up to the area that they're going to build their home. That's why they're asking for such a large area. And then I did discuss this briefly with the Director of Community Development today, because it did go through the Planning Commission, and she concurred that when you were looking at it, it kind of did get discussed as well. But again, with the topography here, that's why they're asking for such a large space.
Thank you, Mr. Blydon, and their goal was to try and get less than 15% grade. Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In my far distant reaches of my memory, I do remember that we in the Lands Housing and Economic Development Committee also questioned why so much, and it made a lot of sense when we saw the map. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything further? Seeing none, Mr. Bryson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the Assembly adopt ordinance 2022-49, an ordinance authorizing the manager to convey approximately one acre of CBJ property near 3145 Fritz Code Road to the Mallors at fair market value, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that motion is passed. Item number five, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is ordinance 2022-51, an ordinance authorizing an alternative procurement method related to the emergency department addition and renovation at Bartlett Regional Hospital.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Deputy Manager?
This ordinance authorizes the manager to competitively solicit proposals and enter into an alternative procurement method for pre-construction services and construction of the emergency room addition and renovation project at Bartlett Regional Hospital. The ordinance has provisions that allow the project to continue in the design stage while Bartlett Regional Hospital awaits a certificate of need decision from the state. General contractor construction manager is a qualifications-based procurement method that allows the contractor to be involved in the design process to limit risk and cost for complicated projects such as the emergency room in which the facility needs to remain operational during construction. I recommend you adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager. Are there any members of public in the room wishing to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none. Madam Chair of Lands Housing and Economic Development, you just discussed this 10 minutes ago.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we did discuss this 10 minutes ago, and the Lands Housing and Economic Development Committee would propose an amendment. They also proposed that this move on to the special assembly meeting. The amendment would be line 10 of page.
Madam, Hale, just to make it clean, would you make a motion first, and then attach the amendment to it?
Make the motion and then make the amendment. Thank you.
Let's do it that way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your skill. I obviously don't have it. I move ordinance 2022-51 related to an alternative procurement method for the emergency department addition at Bartlett. I move that ordinance, and I ask for unanimous consent, and I would like to make an amendment to that ordinance.
Go ahead and do your amendment at this time?
Thank you. The amendment is on line 10 on page two of the ordinance, which is on page 13 of the packet. Rather than 1.493 million, I would like to propose 1.4 million. That just gives a margin to staff, and I ask for unanimous consent to that amendment.
Any questions on the amendment? Ms. Trem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for those of us who are not in the Lands meeting, could you explain why you did that?
I will. Thank you, and I should have maybe given a little more.
Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my night. A little more elucidation there. So the, whenever a change that adds adds or can add beds to a hospital or add services, whenever that occurs, the hospital statewide, the hospital has to go through a process with the state of Alaska to obtain a certificate of need. We are under, that process is underway. That certificate of need is expected by January. But the, so the work can proceed, but the work can't exceed 1.5 million without a certificate of need. So the original idea was to say 1.493 million, but that leaves a very small margin of error, so we want to drop that to 1.4 million until that certificate of need is obtained.
Good job, Ms. Hale. Anything further? All right, on the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment passes, and on the motion as amended, any objection? Seeing none, that motion passes. And before they run off, we have David Keith, who is our new CEO of the hospital, and I'm sorry, Nathan, I don't have your last name. There we go, who's also with the hospital. So thank them for all their work, and all the other staff who did work. You had lots of help. All right, item six, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance 202206 version B R, an ordinance appropriating $12,253.50 to the manager for a grant to the Glory Hall, funding provided by the Affordable Housing Fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Deputy Manager?
This grant would fund the cost of property taxes for the property owned by the Glory Hall at 241247 South Franklin Street. As the program has transitioned its services to the Teal Street facility, there has been some discussion about whether the South Franklin Street building is eligible to retain its exemption status from municipal property taxes. The grant will come from the Affordable Housing Fund and property taxes, and the exact same amount will be paid into the general fund. The manager proposed this grant to avoid an unnecessary debate. CBJ staff will work with the Glory Hall staff this fall to clarify this issue. I recommend you adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy City Manager. Is there any member of the public in the room that wishes to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Assembly. I believe we're in Mrs. Hugh Scandies. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bryson, did you have a question?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to clear a potential conflict. I serve on the Glory Hall Board, but there is no financial compensation involved, and I do not believe that I have a conflict on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Ms. Hugh Scandies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Assembly adopt ordinance 2022-06BR, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that ordinance is passed. All right, item seven, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is ordinance 2022-06B, version BS, an ordinance appropriating $128,200 to the manager for a grant to the Alaska Development Corporation for Medical Respite Care, funding provided by general funds and hospital funds.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Deputy Manager?
Prior to the pandemic, CBJ and Bartlett Regional Hospital shared the cost of medical respite for individuals experiencing homelessness. During the pandemic, the cost of this care was reimbursed by FEMA. However, medical respite is no longer eligible for reimbursement effective July 1 of this year. This ordinance would appropriate $128,200 for medical respite care in FY '23 to be funded by the CBJ and Bartlett. Current medical respite costs exceed pre-pandemic levels due to quarantine and isolation for COVID-positive patients. However, program spending will be reduced in the coming months to align with the historical costs of providing this care. A portion of these costs will be funded by the Healthy and Equitable Communities Grant upon approval by the Alaska Department of Health. I recommend you adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Any member of the public wish to speak to this ordinance that's in the room? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the Assembly. Ms. Trem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move ordinance 2022-06BS and ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that ordinance passes. Item H, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is ordinance 2022-06 version BT, as in Tom, an ordinance transferring up to $500,000 from the CIP P44-089 Deferred Building Maintenance to CIP F, as in Frank, 21-041 Downtown and Glacier Fire Station's mechanical and electrical upgrades.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Deputy Manager?
This request would provide funding for the downtown and Glacier Fire Station's mechanical and electrical upgrade CIP to replace the heating plant system at the Glacier Fire Station and the emergency generators at both Glacier and downtown fire stations. The original project estimate has increased as a result of inflation, supply chain issues, and other economic factors. The ordinance prepared, the ordinance was prepared to transfer an amount of up to $500,000. However, bids came in lower than the estimate, only requiring a transfer of $250,000 to complete project work. The proposed transfer is reallocating funds from the Deferred Building Maintenance CIP, an ongoing project that will retain sufficient funding to cover remaining project work. I recommend you adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager. Any member of the public in the room wish to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none, and we'll bring it back to the Assembly. Ms. Hale, you already got to do one, so we'll go to Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the Assembly approve ordinance 202206BT, an ordinance transferring up to $500,000 from CIP P44089 Deferred Building Maintenance to CIP F21041 Downtown and Glacier Fire Station's Mechanical and Electrical Upgrades, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. All of a sudden, we have a nice echo, but that's all right. We'll power through it. Any objections? Seeing none, that ordinance passes. So on to new business. Item nine, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and my apologies, we are having some technical difficulties, both with our trying to get our captioner online as well as some hiccups that have a power spike, so please bear with us on that. This is bid BE22-108 Glacier Fire Station Mechanical and Electrical Upgrades and Juneau Fire Station Generator Replacement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Deputy Manager?
This project consists of a significant renovation of mechanical and electrical systems at the Glacier Fire Station that are past their useful life. Installation of owner furnished generators at both the Glacier Fire Station and the Juneau Fire Station and associated architectural, civil, and hazmat work. Bids for this project were open on September 15, 2022. The bid protest period expired at 4:30 PM on September 16, 2022. Results of the bid opening can be found in the bid letter on page 20 of this packet. I recommend award of this project to Dawson Construction LLC for the total amount bid of $1,890,700.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy City Manager, and this time I have to disclose, my son worked for Dawson Construction this summer, but I have talked to the attorney, and we do not believe I have a conflict at this time. So with that, we will go to Ms. Glashewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Assembly award bid BE22108 to Dawson Construction, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that bid is awarded. So that takes care of the special assembly meeting, other than to say, tell everybody, look in your email box sometime tonight or tomorrow, and you will find it's that time of year again, and I'll be asking you what committees you want to be on or liaison. And Ms. Trem also has an announcement.
I have a very fun announcement for everybody. Finance is canceled on Wednesday.
Thank you, Ms. Trem. We appreciate that. So with that, we are adjourned as a special assembly committee of the whole. We'll follow as soon as the clerks are ready. If we can have a good five minutes to just look at tech.
Five minutes. To order for September 26, 2022, and the clerk will note the role. Everybody's here either in person or on Zoom. We have five agenda items. Just to give folks an idea, for example, regarding the Board of Equalization, that's, that'll be the first touch here. We're not, we're not expected to go through that line by line and make decisions. It's Mr. Palmer's gonna tell us in general about it, so we'll see that again, just for your planning purposes. So the first thing we have is ordinance regarding Gasinal Lodge Apartment Update. Mr. Barr, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Palmer, I meant to say the other.
The other Robert. Exactly. Thank you, Madam Chair. In front of you, the first item is the $700,000 loan concept to the Gasinal Lodge Apartments. It's back in front of you at the cow tonight, because I discovered that we inadvertently put the phrase LLC in the title and through the substance of the ordinance. And why those three little letters make a big difference or potentially a big difference is up to the Assembly to decide if it's a big deal or not. So the way the ordinance was drafted originally was we would loan money, if it was adopted, we would loan money to a partnership between a company that Mr. Steve Sangson was the managing member of, and then to an individual, Doug Tricano. In a partnership arrangement, if something is in default, the partners are personally liable for that default. And so when the concept that was being presented was a $350 grant upfront for planning and soft costs, and then you, you know, the partners have to do a bunch of work and do some site improvements, and then you get another $350, $350,000 for those projects. If for whatever reason the project went belly up, we could sell the property, recover any property value of the property, and then if we needed to recover more up to our $700,000 loan, the partners would be personally liable. That changes with the addition of LLC. So with the addition of an LLC, in general, people are, members of an LLC of business are not personally liable. Now, you can pierce the corporate veil, that's a more complicated concept, but in general, just think of it as the individuals are not liable, and the risk shifts from the individuals to the CBJ. So what that would mean for this project is that if we loan $350,000 for the permitting, and then an additional $350,000 for improvement costs, if the project went belly up, our real recourse is just to the property value, and the two members would generally walk away unless there are other terms. So I don't know if that was the Assembly's intent, or if it, if it was acceptable or not. I wanted to make sure it was raised early enough, so we're not doing that at a public hearing. If that is, if you are comfortable with that risk, then you can leave LLC in the title. I will have some other amendments to make it consistent. If you're not comfortable with that risk, then we need to strike LLC and reintroduce this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Just a quick question. They are, this group is not an LLC at this moment, is that correct?
Correct. This group does not have an LLC form, however, that's a relatively short process if they have the right documents available.
Okay. Who has questions for Mr. Palmer? Ms. Hale?
Your turn. I guess my question is have you spoken to the applicants, and is it their intent to do this as an LLC, or did this just creep in at the staff level? Do you have any idea what their, what their thoughts and preference are?
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hale. I have not personally spoken to the applicants. I know Mr. Barr and Mr. Watt have. I believe their intent the entire time has been to use an LLC.
Mr. Barr, any comments? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Glashewski. Yes, that is my understanding of their intent. I do know that we have one of the applicants, Mr. Sangston, or at least I believe we have him online tonight, although I'm not looking at Zoom, so I'm not sure.
Is that adequate, Ms. Hale?
That is, I'll just point out, online 16, on page three, the Gasinal Lodge Apartments is a partnership between an LLC and Douglas Tricano, so that's an additional wrinkle. So one of the partners is an LLC.
Mr. Palmer?
You are correct, Ms. Hale. The distinction here is that Mr. Tricano is not an LLC, and so it's a lot easier to recover from an individual who's not an LLC.
More questions? So, Ms. Hugh Scandies? You're, you're, you might, you're thinking about it. You have one. Madam Mayor? Go ahead.
I don't have a question. I have a motion.
Go ahead, make a motion, we could chat.
So I don't believe it was the intent, at least it was not mine, to do the loan through an LLC. My intent was to do it through a partnership. So I would move ordinance 2022-06BP with an amendment to strike LLC throughout the ordinance and to make sure it's a partnership throughout the ordinance and not with the LLC, with Gasinal Lodge Apartments LLC, but between the partnership of the other LLC, Dr. Tricano and us.
Okay, you heard the mayor's motion. Who has comments, or does anybody object? Mr. Bryson?
Object for the purpose of a question.
All right, head.
So what it sounds like, and I was trying to come up with the right phrase, we're asking these two individuals to personally guarantee that, so if I go to a bank and I want to, even if I'm a corporation, I want to borrow, they can loan to the corporation, or they're asking an individual to personally guarantee the loan by eliminating the ability to have an LLC. We're asking these two individuals to personally guarantee this loan. Does that change the loan for the individuals? Because if their intention was to not personally guarantee this, and we now put into it that they have to personally guarantee it, that could prevent them from following through and borrowing the funds. If I, I mean, that's, that makes all the difference in the world on a loan.
Mr. Palmer, or Mr. Barr, who has an answer?
Madam Chair, I think, I think that's really a question only the applicants can answer. I don't, I don't know if they would still accept loan funding under a partnership versus an LLC.
Okay, Mr. Songson, are you online? And if you, could you bring him over if he is? Mr. Songson, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. So did you hear the question?
Yeah, and I think the attorney was, was not quite right. We applied for this loan over a year ago as an LLC. The LLC was formed at that time, and it's always been our intent to proceed on this project as an LLC. It'll be a single entity LLC just working on this project.
Did you hear Mr. Bryson's question?
Yes, I think so. Could you repeat it or restate it?
The question is, if it's not, if we make this be a partnership in the ordinance, what would your action then be?
I'd have to talk to Doug about it, but I, but I think, you know, as I, as I stated, we applied for this as an LLC, and it's been our intention to have this as a, as a separate business venture, a standalone business venture under the name of Gasinal Lodge Apartments. If it goes to a partnership, I don't know, it hasn't, it hasn't been under those, under those arrangements for over a couple of years.
Okay, Madam Mayor has a question for you.
Okay.
Mr. Sangson, I'm a little confused, because if you, because we have a partnership between Verde Infrastructure Partners LLC and Douglas Tricano. If you meant for Gasinal Lodge Apartments to be an LLC, why haven't you already applied to be an LLC?
We have, and I supplied those state numbers to the, to the Assembly and to the Affordable Housing Fund when we did the application over a year ago.
Madam Mayor, follow up?
Okay, so my question is, I did not realize you were an LLC, and that changes the game for me a bit. Because if you're not trying to assume any liability, why would you think that the city should assume full liability?
Mr. Songson?
I'm not quite sure how to answer that. I don't know. It's just, you know, in the organization of the business, it, our secondary financing also requires a single entity LLC to apply for the funding. So we just kept it consistent.
Madam Mayor? Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is kind of something where we don't have minutes necessary to look back at the meeting where we talked about this, but, you know, we actually looked at this as, that they were in LLC when we actually looked at this before. I don't think this language here in front of us has changed in the ordinance. We also talked about the collateral, that the land is collateral for that loan, and we talked about the, the value being somewhere between the assessed value at 795 and the assessed, I mean, the appraised value at 795 and the assessed value at 134,000. I mean, the appraised value at 795 and the assessed value at 134,000. So I just want to point out that with that collateral, that collateral is what gave this committee and this assembly a lot of the comfort that we have with moving this forward. I'm comfortable with the LLC. I know that means that the assembly itself and CBJ assumes risk, but I'm also comfortable because we have that, that land as collateral.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I believe that's the reason we structured the loan this way. Is that in two chunks in order to account for that risk? Is that correct?
Correct. So the first, they can't, they don't spend anything. The only thing, the only risk is the first half. Right? Any comments on that? Anybody? Yeah, okay. More questions? Who's talking? Who's waving their hands? Oh, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess since I saw the original ordinance as an LLC, I had fully, and also just knowing somewhat how, how things work. I guess I was not expecting that should this project not proceed or any of that, that we'd be going after anyone personally. That just usually isn't how it works. And I guess for me, if it were random Joe from out of town one and random Gary from out of town two, I would maybe be a little more concerned, but Mr. Sangson has had a long history in Juneau, as had Mr. Tricano. I'm, I, there is risk. We've understood that the whole time. I'm, I'm okay. I'm, I'm fine continuing to move it as going to an LLC and understanding the risk and knowing that these two people have a long history in Juneau and a long history of development in Juneau and reputations and families in Juneau. So anyway, I'm, I'm okay proceeding with an LLC and kind of had thought that that was what we were doing all along. Thank you.
Okay, so just to be clear on the motion, the ordinance has been moved and the amendment, Madam Mayor's amendment is to strike the LLC from the ordinance. So you're ready to vote on that amendment? Okay. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I do actually have two questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So. Thank you, Ms. Wall. I think with, I very much appreciate the attorney bringing this to our attention and, and delineating more clearly what that means. I would agree with Mr. Smith. I feel like we, part of our conversation was that we took on with, between the collateral and putting liens on the property or on the items purchased, we understood we'd be taking on some risk. I, it's not clear to me with the applicant, I guess, I still don't feel like I have a really clear understanding. You already stated that you had applied for this originally as an LLC. So just to make it obvious to me, would you be, you're not interested if this was to a partnership? Is that correct?
Mr. Songson.
Madam Mayor, yes. That's correct. The LLC is what the business entity and their legal counsel has suggested we use to go forward. And like I say, this was set up over a year ago to proceed in that manner. And it's, and it's required if it is a partnership instead of an LLC. I don't, you know, I can't speak for my partner, but I don't, for what I'm working with, but I, I don't think it's, no, he's already putting up the property, so he probably wouldn't be interested in a partnership type of.
Mr. Song.
And I appreciate your patience with, you've already answered it. I just want to make sure that I fully understand. No further questions.
Mr. Songson, can I just clarify the LLC? This is Maria Gladys Shesky. But you, you said you've applied a year ago. My understanding is you get them, it shouldn't take that long. Are, is this entity an LLC or is it not? And I believe we don't have evidence that it is. Could you clarify?
Yes, you should have evidence in the original application of the Affordable Housing Loan Fund. Let's see, I know it was one of our attachments and we've got, we've got a state license, that sort of thing.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor. So I'm going to resort to the attorney because I believe Gas and Lodge's Lodge Apartments LLC does not exist.
Madam, Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, thank you. So this has been a point, a contentious issue for the administration on this very topic. Gasno Lodge Apartments LLC does not exist, and we have been looking for it. We've asked Mr. Sangson for proof of it for the last few weeks, months. And what we get in exchange are partnership documents between Verde and Mr. Tricano. There is nothing in state corporation database tonight or in the last month that indicates Gas and Lodge Apartments exists. And that's okay, as long as there's documents that are forthcoming and we can evaluate those so you can understand your risk. But right now, the entity does not exist.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, with that piece of news, I'm going to withdraw my motion and my amendment. And I would make a new motion that ordinance 2022-06BP remain in the Committee of the Whole until Gas and Lodge Apartments LLC is an entity and we have the paperwork to prove it.
Okay, Mr. Smith has his hand up. You have a comment on the motion?
Yeah, objection for the purpose of a question, I guess. By holding it, I, I mean, by understanding when I've set these up too, they can happen really quickly. But I guess this ordinance, I mean, nothing would happen until the, Mr. Palmer, would anything happen with, until the LLC is set up? Or can we approve the ordinance and when the LLC is set up, then it can, then the, the, the actions included therein can then pursue or continue?
So the ordinance has been introduced. Mr. Palmer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So the ordinance has been introduced. It puts us in an awkward position of trying to negotiate with somebody who doesn't exist. And so it may make the most sense to hold this in committee until this entity exists. And then we can actually negotiate with Gasno Lodge Apartments LLC.
Any other comments on the motion, questions about the motion? Is there objection to the motion?
Madam.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to, I, I'm a, a little strange that the LLC hasn't been formed yet, but whatever. I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to keep this thing moving along so that we don't keep pushing a potential housing project out because we won't have another meeting until then, in almost a month, I believe. Anyway, just not, just want to keep this thing moving along and I'm not, I'm not terribly, not terribly concerned. The LLC hasn't been created yet. So I, I guess I am kind of objecting. I'd like to move it along.
Anybody else want to comment? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, for the removal of the amendment and to keep ordinance 2022-06BP in the Committee of the Whole. Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Well, lucky duck.
Yes.
Ms. Wall.
No.
Ms. Train. She stepped out. Ms. Skendys.
Yes.
Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
And Madam Deputy Mayor.
Yes.
Motion carries six yeas, two nays.
And there's, thank you. There's one more question in the memo regarding changing the terms. You know, we, several people here already mentioned liking the terms that we had, two tranches with the parameters we suggested. Does anybody wish to change that? Looking around the room, nobody's wanting to raise their hand. Okay, great. So we'll leave this ordinance as it is in here. Thanks, everybody.
Madam Chair, can we take a brief recess?
You bet. How, two minutes or however long, don't go anywhere.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to notify the assembly and anyone listening that, that we are aware of a landslide that occurred shortly when we had our power outage here on Gastonoe Avenue. We have, we have fire and police crews responding to that. I don't have much information at this time right now. I don't believe, sorry, I don't believe, don't believe we have individually, I don't believe we have individuals that are, that are injured or at risk. The images that I have are of trees coming down between houses, not on top of houses. That said, we are asking individuals on Gastonoe Avenue to, or advising individuals in that general area on Gastonoe Avenue to evacuate. We are expecting significant more rain over the evening and it's not unreasonable to expect additional landslide activity.
Questions, anyone? Okay. I have a question. Is Ms. Peta here from Clinkit Haida online? I can't see the little screen. Yeah, bring them over, please. We'll, we'll, we'll get to them when we. Mr. Barr, you have information or Mr. Blydon on this item?
Mr. Blydon on this one, please, Madam Chair.
So we heard this part of this once. This is an opportunity to ask more questions. I'm, I'm interested about what we've, when we've done this before, what's the history of that? Anyway, whatever you, you can help us with, Mr. Blydon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And so with us tonight, we have three members of the Clinkit Haida Regional Housing Authority, I believe, joining us by Zoom. And this went to Lance Committee where it received a motion of support. And it went to the Assembly under New Business where it did also receive a motion of support to work with the original proposer. And so at Lance Committee, it was sent to this committee here, COW, to continue investigating and asking questions. And I think from what I understand, most of the questions may be answered by the applicant. But if there's specific questions on the property, I'd be glad to answer them as well.
Okay, Mr. Blydon, my question is about previous times the city has been involved in these kinds of transactions.
I think if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking specifically about less than fair market value disposals of city property. And so.
Large amounts of city property, not one house, but yeah.
There's not many examples of when the city sold property at less than fair market value. We haven't had many developers or entities come forward with something where they're going to provide affordable housing. And so the one example that I think everybody has some type of memory of was in 1995. There's an area of the Menon Hall Valley that the city worked with the Housing Authority to develop. And that resulted in affordable workforce housing as well. And so in that case, it was an interesting situation where we had a preliminary plat and we worked with the Housing Authority for them to put in the infrastructure and build the subdivision and build the roads and things like that. And then when that was complete, they did it back to the city properties that equaled the value of the property prior to the subdivision being complete. And again, I think the applicant, Ms. Peta, worked on that in 95, so she might be able to elaborate on that more as well. And so not many examples of this type of situation moving forward.
Um, Ms. Peta. It's Peta. I'm sorry. Is it Peta?
Yes.
Sorry for the mispronouncing.
That's right.
Being a person whose name is mispronounced. Anyway, go ahead. Thanks for, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Yes, we did in the City to One subdivision was a partnership with the city. You know, to give us, for us to receive the property, we brought in the infrastructure. The plan at that point was that like almost every other lot, so that we could have more of a mixed subdivision. So every other lot, the Housing Authority developed later, other entities came in and developed some of those lots with partnerships with the city. For example, the high school had a youth build project. I think they developed a couple of houses out there. Then there were some additional housing that was available. I think the Housing Authority developed some of that and some was sold to private individuals for them to build their own homes within the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. But it was whatever value of the property that the city had that initially the city donated, or I don't know if that's the right word, eventually the city got some, some lots back for that. That's, is that my understanding?
Yeah, there, there were some lots that came back, but I don't need, and to be honest, I'd have to go back and really look because that really wasn't the main crux of the deal. The property that the Housing Authority developed, a number of them were homeownership units. So they were a program at the time that was considered more of a rent to own. And so this Housing Authority played, paid pilot. And then eventually those properties would be coming on the tax roll, which they're experiencing now, a number of them are on the tax, tax rolls. And, and you know, prior to that, that was undeveloped land that there was no tax received from. So, you know, it, it also brought in future revenues to the city that, you know, that weren't, that wasn't part of the deal at, at that time, you know, so. So that was part of what we looked at a lot at was what would be the future revenues. And yes, there was, although the, the interest of the city wasn't necessarily that every other lot was going to, you know, restore the value of the land as much as it was promoting affordable housing. And there was, like I said, other entities that took advantage of it and was able to be part of providing some affordable housing through the programs that they provided to.
Okay, thank you. Who has questions for Ms. Peta? Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Peta, for being here tonight. And we don't have to flush through details tonight, but you and I had had a separate conversation that instead of selling the property at $635,000, which was the fair market price, I don't have a problem giving it to Clinkit Haida Regional Housing Authority because you guys have done great work and I think you will do something here. But I had asked if you would be willing to consider a sum and I just threw out $100,000 to support a park in the area. Would you be willing to still look at giving some kind of some, like I said, we don't have to negotiate here for a park in the area?
Yes, I, I think the park makes a lot of sense. We have a park in City to One. We also put a park in Glacier Village. I think those are amenities that neighborhoods need.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Peta. Two questions. One is, I imagine any cost for the land will then probably be spread out to those people buying, buying properties, buying a house or whatever. I mean, would it be just a pretty easy? Say, say we sell you the land for $300,000. Would we, would you just divide that number amongst the total properties or what could we expect in terms of increasing the, the per lot based on how much we, we, we sell you the, the land for?
I think the bottom line is that you really are looking at how do you make an affordable home in our community and the cost of construction? We all know that the cost of development in that area of Juneau is quite costly. The site development was quite expensive. I don't think even though you move just a little bit away from it, that it won't be less expensive. And you still, and then you still are trying to like, you know, kind of like back into what can somebody afford to buy a home for, that's, you know, that still makes it affordable for those that are, you know, in 80% of median income, maybe 80 to 100, 60 to 80, which is a lot of the folks in our communities. 80% of median income, maybe 80 to 100, 60 to 80, which is a lot of the folks in our communities are working in. And you just can't. And, you know, so we apply for a lot of grants. And that's where I think the advantage is to the city. We apply for a lot of grants to help pay for some of that infrastructure. We are not looking to pass on all the costs of our development to a home buyer. What happened in, you know, Peterson Hill, the, the homes that are built there now, they're, they're beautiful and they're nice and they're expensive. And they're not necessarily affordable to, you know, to those that are in the middle class working. And so I think that, you know, what our goal is, is to try to look for providing housing and making it at a price that's affordable. The difference between what we did in City to One versus what we're looking at doing here is that we would expect that our homeownership program would be more of a mortgage, which means that they would get on the tax rolls immediately upon purchase rather than having this rent to own situation. And so, and, you know, perhaps there may be some rentals within there, but majority we're looking for homeownership where they would be on the tax rolls and you would start redeeming, you know, property tax for, for that. For example, right now, we are, have a public notice out because, because this is grant season. And we are applying for an ICBG, which is just like the CDBG that the city typically applies for or has a partner apply with you for. This is the Indian version of that. We're applying for just infrastructure. We're going to apply for another competitive project, grant that's eligible just for, you know, Indian housing authorities and we're applying for that. You know, should this project move forward, which will also be towards developing some of the infrastructure and hopefully the beginning of that, of that construction of some of the homes. But no, I wouldn't say that we are looking to pass on all of our costs because at the end of the day, that doesn't make the home affordable in a place that someone of 80% of median income to 100% of median income could actually afford to buy.
Thank you. So we have Mr. Bryson and then Ms. Hale. And then.
Okay, put me at the end of the list then. Thank you.
Did you have your? Do you have a question too? Okay. You're, you're after that. I didn't see your hand. Go ahead, Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Would there be a potential for a trade as opposed to requesting funds from Clinkit-Haida Regional Housing Authority? Would it be, is there land available from Clinkit-Haida that might be available for a trade, say like on North Douglas or the backside of Douglas? Is, is that even a possibility?
Ms. Peta.
Well, I've never thought about that. We do have some property that we have no access to. No, I, I really hadn't thought about that at all. You know, the Housing Authority has some parcels of property that are just not developable at this time. You know, there's various reasons for that. But, you know, when we're looking to try to do these affordable housing projects, we're looking for those that have easy access already to water, sewer, infrastructure, things that don't make providing those utilities to the site more expensive. And so that's why we're, you know, our goal right now has been to look for properties that are more readily available to be developed in a shorter time span. And partly because the city needs it. You know, the city's got a housing shortage and you don't, we don't need the time that it takes to figure out how we cross a, create a bridge to cross and create a second access and other kinds of things that are challenges to some of the other sites that we might already have.
Thank you, Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I'll say this because all of the material that we already looked at is not necessarily in this packet. I think it's important for us to remember. I mean, we're asking really good questions and they're important questions, but it's also important for us to remember that as I, as I understand, we had directed staff to work with Clinkit-Haida Regional Housing Authority. So anything that actually staff works up is going to come back through the Assembly anyway. So we'll be seeing this again and again. I just want to make that note.
Walagirac, I, I didn't see your hand because it's not yellow. So you, you're up there first. Go ahead.
I happen to be brown, so thanks for noticing that. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Peta. I was just wondering, you know, in accordance with how Clinkit-Haida structures their housing requirements, would it be fair to say that the, the residents who were going to be occupying these homes for Clinkit-Haida must live there year, year round, that they cannot sublease for short-term rentals, that, that this is actually putting people into homes year round? Is that fair to say?
Yes, they must be their primary residence. And that is, that is a condition.
Do you have more? You're good? Okay, thanks. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Somewhat similar, I guess, the other, my other question was just, these are, are these going to mostly first-time home buyers? I, I mean, I, anyway, but are these mostly going to first-time home buyers? These people don't own another home. I, I know that seems silly, but just to, just to confirm, if you would. Thank you.
That's typically who we serve is those that are first-time home buyers. They would be, and, and you want to not consider a mobile home as a, a home, because we do have a lot of mobile homes in Juneau that are, you know, dilapidated, that need to be replaced with something different.
Thank you. So that maybe would also be like a slightly upgrading from another, maybe they may own a, a condo or a mobile. Anyway, a slight upgrade could also, people could be doing that.
Yeah, it, it typically, there could be an overcrowded situation where you have multiple families living in one home. And you're just trying to like separate out the families. But yeah, this would be a primary home. It typically is a first-time home buyer or someone who hasn't had a home to themselves in any recent years. Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I might have missed it, but how many homes were we talking about? That was my first question. The second question, both easy questions. I believe you were going to mix the low income and the moderate income, so it wasn't one section is low income. And correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. We were looking to do a mixture. I believe that the first want to say B or C was like 20 lots there. And then C had an additional number of lots and Dan can correct me on those because I don't have that in front of me. But we were looking to do a number of different types of funding sources and programs with, just so that you could, first of all, because it's a large subdivision and then you need lots of resources and capital to make it happen, but also we wanted to have a variety. So for example, in our Glacier Village program that we did in that subdivision, we used tax credits. But we had, we use rent to own tax credit. So they were actually single-family houses that were a tax credit home. They owned them, you know, they owned them for, they were tenants for 15 years and then they had the ability to purchase the home should they so want to. So there's a, a number of a variety of different programs that are available. And we expect that, given the nature of such a large, you know, project, that we would have to utilize a variety of programs to make it happen. And, you know, including, you know, some of the programs that we would get through the Indian programs that actually have requirements that they are native households. But we didn't want it to be just that type of a subdivision.
Did you get your answers or did you have?
Thank you. And we'll just clarify with Mr. Blydon, how many lots there were.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So between the two phases that are being proposed here, it would be 69 lots total.
How, how much land?
It's, it's about 11 acres, 11 and a half acres.
So did you say that there were, that'd be 69 houses? Sorry, I missed that. I was, 69 lots, but is that what that means? 69 houses? Ms. Peta.
Oh, that, that would be available. I think you have to take a look, you know, where you're going to put the, where, where the parks might go, other kinds of things that are, are there, the sizes. You know, I think all of that has to be evaluated. So I, I, I'm not going to say, yes, it's going to be 69 houses, but you have the potential for 69.
Thank you.
Madam Deputy Mayor, may I just add a point of clarification, just that we have a preliminary plat, but as we move forward, if this disposal goes forward, there's likely going to be some minor changes to that plat before it's a final plat. So currently there are 69 lots, including two park lots, but looking at some potential changes that might change by a lot or two.
Sure, something like that.
Exactly.
Not 20 and not 200. Thank you. More questions for Ms. Peta? I have a question for Mr. Blydon. My issue with this has been, we have an affordable housing process and a big, long application and experts who look at it. And that's why we're giving Ms. Peta the third degree here because there, you know, we didn't have those people look at it. So knowing what you do about that process and the information and the discussions that happen with that committee, do you have all the information you would have gotten in that process now? And if not, what would you be missing? And yeah.
Thank you for that question. I thought a lot about it since you brought it to our attention at the Assembly under New Business. And I think it's important to note that we have the Affordable Housing Fund, the Assembly has the Affordable Housing Fund and they have the Land Fund. And so I think this is probably the correct process to move an application like this forward and not through the Housing Fund because with the Housing Fund, there has to be some land ownership. And in this case, the city owns a land. So I guess the short answer is yes, I've received all the information that I would need as if this was going through the Affordable Housing Fund. And I have had the opportunity to be a part of the committee who worked on the applications for the first round of the Affordable Housing Fund last year. And so I'm pretty familiar with the information that we requested. And I think this pretty much includes very similar information.
That's perfect. I like that answer. Madam Mayor. Any more questions?
I would move a motion of support to work with Clinkit-Haida Regional Housing Authority, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, so bear with me, for Phase 1B and 1C of the Peterson Hills subdivision. So I should say, we should negotiate with the Clinkit-Haida Regional Housing Authority. Is that what you need, Mr. Deputy Manager and Mr. Attorney? Or do you need me to say anything more?
I think that's good, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. That's my motion.
Is there any objections? Any objections to that motion? All right. Thanks very much. Thank you to Ms. Peta and your whole staff and really appreciate what you do for housing in this town. It's, I look forward to seeing some houses up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution 2993. Who is going to, Mr. Palmer is going to talk about that. Go ahead, Mr. Palmer.
I'll start this one off and then possibly hand it to Mr. Chamber or pass it back to Walagirac and see what direction he, she would like us to go. So at a prior committee meeting, Assembly Member Walagirac requested a amendment to our accessory apartment grant program to explore ideas on limiting short-term rental use of those properties. We have, Mr. Chambers presented a memo identifying some of the complexities of the program. There's a draft resolution that, I'm sorry, it's hard to read. But there's two concepts embedded in it for use and I'll just briefly describe them. One is just a, essentially a promise from the applicant that they promised not to use short-term rental. And the second, which is in a comment later on in the draft, is the idea that the short-term, excuse me, the accessory apartment grant program currently is a $6,000 grant. And so one way to manage enforcement would be provide some chunk of money upfront to $1,000, $3,000, whatever the number you want. And then if the property is not used for a certain rental, then at the end of whatever time period you think is reasonable, then you would release the second tranche of funds. So two ideas for you. Be glad to go over more details. Mr. Chambers available to go over the complexities for staff. Or maybe Ms. Walagirac would like to explore. These are other ideas.
So we'll go to Walagirac if you have comments, things to say.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I appreciate the, the, the work that staff has put into this. I, I really appreciate the amendments that are made in the, the resolution that amend the eligibility for award. And just so folks know, my goal here was to get to the original intent of this program, which from the history, history that I've heard from other Assembly Members who were around when this was established and other individuals, you know, the intent was to, to increase housing availability in our community. And so my goal with my, my motion to, to amend the, the program as it stands, and that was agreed upon by our committee, was to try and get more closer to a point where we weren't awarding $6,000 grants to individuals who are just going to turn around and open up short-term rentals, which nothing against short-term rentals, I just wanted to utilize a program for the original intent and get closer to what I hope can be more apartments, more accessory apartments that, that go to, to families or go to individuals who are going to stay and work in our community and have homes and, and build long-lasting relationship with this place.
Thank you. Ms. Usain Candice, you have a question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Now that I've eagerly gotten your attention, I don't know if this is the right moment to, or if staff wants to talk to it first. I appreciate Walagirac's comments. I think that's a very worthy thing to do, and I was very supportive of that. Based on this memo, I have comments and thoughts on what to do with this resolution. So do you want me to go for it?
Our question, what is, what are we going to do? Are we going to move this forward, introduce it? Are we going to amend it? You know, what's, that's what, that's what we're here to decide.
Great. So looking over this, I felt like, appreciate staff looking at the complexities of this. However, I think that it was over complex and I think it can be a lot simpler than that would be my two cents. I understand that tracking is never going to be perfect. I'm thinking back to a comment Mr. Edwardson made when he was still in the Assembly, which is, in general, people want to follow the law. Not everybody will, but if people, if you, most people, if you say these are the rules, will follow them. So I would think that rather than doing it in two chunks of money or anything like that, that we should amend this resolution. And I have a couple of places where I would amend it. And I could tell you those if you're interested in hearing them, but just that to make it as part of the requirements and put that language in there that if you default, you pay it back. And then as we, as part of our process with short-term rentals, more holistically, as we're gathering more data, then if any of those are matched up, then those are the ones we'd go after for repayment. So those are my two cents.
Mr. Bryson, you had a, first of all, anybody has questions, please make the questions first and then we'll go to the work on it. Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. My question is, how big of a problem has this proven to be? At 72,000, 6,000 bucks pop, we have 12 accessory apartment grants. Do we have any report whatsoever that any of these 12 units were used for short-term rentals?
Mr. Chamber.
Sure, yes. So through the chair. So back last summer, we did a report for the COW on the accessory apartment grant incentive program looking at short-term rental usage at the time. And I believe at that point, we had approximately 30 grants that have been provided and people were actively had apartments created. And I believe the Sales Tax Office was able to find that eight of them at some point in that time, used it as a short-term rental. But with their sales tax numbers. But with their sales tax numbers, realistically, only four was doing it routinely. It looked like the other four had done it like once or twice and hadn't, but for the most part, the majority of the units were being used as. For whatever homeowner used that.
What was the number of total I missed? I forgot.
I believe I can get the memo from the last summer, but it was roughly thirty grants at that time, and eight out of the thirty had been. Utilizing it as a short-term rental at some point.
Okay. Ms. Hale, and then Mayor Walden. You have a question?
Mayor Walden has a question. I don't, I just.
Okay, Mayor Walden.
Mr. Chambor answered my question.
Any more questions? And then I did, my question was, so there were twelve, and seventy-two thousand, I thought it was less. We do, we do seventy-two, seventy-two thousand a year. We have been doing seventy-two thousand a year. Is that what you said? Somebody just said that?
Yes, so Madam Chair. From fiscal year two thousand eighteen through twenty-three, ninety-six thousand dollars per year were available for this program. In two thousand eighteen, there were six, two thousand nineteen, seven, two thousand and twenty-ten. And then there's been a backlog because of COVID and a lot of delays. We've granted a lot of extensions. And you're seeing that kind of gap in two thousand and twenty-one where there were two. And then this year it's picked up again, so we've rewarded eight grants so far, and there's seven applications pending. So then process.
Okay, seven, eight a year, ten, nine, something. Okay, thanks. More questions? Madam, Ms. Hale, you had a comment?
Yeah, just a comment, and it's kind of along the lines of what Mrs. Candies was commenting on, and it's, you know. The this idea of splitting the payments, it's actually not in this resolution, it's just a comment.
Right.
As a comment, and and I would just say, I don't like that idea because I like the idea of that six thousand being available to help pay for the permit fees. And doing it, doing the work, and if you you have to wait five years to get it, you don't have the money.
Right. I'll just make a comment. I agree with Ms. Hughes Candies and would just like to do this and make it easy. Waha Gidok, would you like to move the? Resolution?
Push the wrong button. Yes, sorry. Yeah, I'll move Resolution two-nine-nine-three and ask for unanimous consent.
As written with the one just as written. Okay, anybody have comments or objection? Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I'll object, I objected the first time. I'm just still feeling like. We haven't explored how we wanna regulate short-term rentals. In my mind, this is the type of short-term rental that. You know, we we wanna see in our community, and I think there are lots of people, and I I totally understand that the intent of this program is to support housing. And and I think that should be the intent of the program, but I believe that there are lots of people out there when they're considering whether to. Make this investment. They're thinking about a lot of options that they may be able to to use this apartment for. They're. Hopefully renting, maybe they have guests in their house, friends and family, maybe they wanna. Do a short-term rental every now and then, and so I'd hate to discourage. Those folks from taking advantage of this opportunity because they see that as a, something that they might pursue.
Okay, there's, so there's objection. Any other comments on the motion? Are you ready for the?
Thank you, Madam.
Press my button.
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to thank Ms. Wall. This is kind of where I was torn on it, whereas. We don't want to directly encourage people to create something to create a short-term rental, but. I I think the. We're we're losing sight of the, we're giving a small incentive for people to add on and increase square footage of their house, which increases. Property tax. So while it seems like we're protecting the community and not allowing this. Incentive to benefit short-term rentals. Anybody that uses this program is going to pay more money in property tax than the six thousand dollars. We give them over the course of them living in their home. So limiting this because we're wanting to. Limit short-term rentals in our house, I think might be a little short-sighted. If we have. Every program is trying to just create more square footage of living space. If a small percentage of this action goes to short-term rentals and a small percentage of another action we went to. We've only got small percentage of short-term rentals, but we're doing all these great housing things, and if we have. Tenants in line and two of those people do some short-term rentals sometime, we've still created. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of property tax that will benefit the community. In a different way than limiting short-term rentals, so. I I don't, it is a sticky wicket. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bryson. Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bryson, for saying sticky wicket. We don't hear it enough in modern discourse. I'm gonna move, I guess I'll just quickly respond to those comments and say I'm definitely more. Motivated right now by trying to make sure we have housing for everybody than thinking about the increase in property tax, and I'm sort of horrified by. Thirteen percent use rarely and twenty-seven percent using it sometimes. I think those are pretty awful numbers. As an overall percentage of the program. But that being said, did I do my math terribly wrong with Hale? Okay. Oh, sorry, I should clarify, based on the numbers that Mr. Chambor just gave us, he's told us that twenty-seven percent. Of people who have used this program have used it for Airbnb, and thirteen percent use it regularly for Airbnb. Or short-term rental, rather. Sorry, you're not always in my head, but I feel like you all are. So I would move an amendment and. I guess I should ask them flying off the cuff, whether you want me to do like one line at a time, or there's really only two sections. They, in these two lines, amend it this way and that way. What would be the preference?
Just, what's the amendment? I don't know if.
I I would like to amend this resolution. Would you rather hear one at a time, or would you rather hear?
Okay, I mean, if they're different.
Okay.
I mean, I I don't know, because go ahead.
Okay, well, then I'll start on page twenty-six of the packet. Lines seventy, seventy-one and here because. So in line seventy. Add a comma after rental and then strike the words from issuance of the certificate of occupancy for three years. And. Strike all those words, so it would read, agree not to rent the apartment as a short-term rental. A default would cause a property owner to owe blah, blah, blah. So that would be my first amendment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hughes Candies amendment to remove the restriction for three years and just say not to rent the apartment as short-term rental. Go ahead, Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. I object, and I think that that Ironman this summer is a really good example. Of a property that might be used for a short-term rental, very rarely, but in a, in an instance where it's really important. This would lock people into never being able to use an apartment. Or something that they've added onto their house as a short-term rental and having to pay that that six thousand dollars back, even if the community needs it really badly. So I I think it would be locking people in too greatly.
Madam Mayor.
I'll object also, and it's kind of what Ms. Hale said and kind of touching a little bit about Ms. Wall said, we haven't made. Any regulations regarding short-term rentals, so and this wouldn't lock you in, so if you did, if you rented long-term for three. Years, and then if you needed to do it short-term at some point, that you have that option if you weren't making enough money to pay for it.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I I guess just. I, from what I've read and understand, the enforcement of this sounds. Very problematic. I don't understand the mechanism of clawing the money back from people. I also, however, in philosophy. Agree that if people are gonna use these for short-term rentals, that they maybe shouldn't get the grant. My solution would just be to say they agree to rent the property, to not rent the property as a short-term rental from issuance, period. And then describe what that is. I, I, it's, it's so complicated, and we're like, gonna be people, we're spending so much time and money trying to fight this around for really. Not that big of amount of money for, you know, the people that have used it. I, I'm trying to figure out how I get there, so. I'm. I, I. I'm, I'll probably oppose this too, because I don't want the default language in there, because I don't, I think we should just have people say. I will not use this as a short-term rental, and. If Ironman happens, maybe they come up, maybe they do it, and that's fine, but.
Mr. Smith, just to be clear, you just said you'd vote against it, but the amendment is doing what you just said you wanted, I think.
Except I don't want, I don't, I don't want the default part, it's just, it's just like, I mean, if we have that in there, then are we gonna have to? Or then, I guess I just don't want our staff to be spending all this time trying to find out if people are, you know, renting it as short-term rentals. I just want people when they. Sign up for the program to sign on the line and say, I will not use this as a short-term rental, and hopefully, and most people will stick to their word.
Okay, let me just ask the maker of the motion, are you, Ms. Hughes Candies, if I understand, you are just deleting. From issuance of the certificate of occupancy for three years. That's correct. You're not taking out the default part. Is that right?
That's correct, Madam Chair, and that was. Considering what the constraints on staff time and trying to simplify the resolution.
So it's to say, agree not to rent the apartment as a short-term rental, and a default would cause the property owner to blah, blah. Okay. Just make it clear. I just wanted to make it clear.
Yeah.
And I got confused. Mr. Smith, are you, any, you're good? You have more? Okay, okay, you're ready for the question, Amendment One, to delete the words Ms. Hughes Candy says to delete. Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for Ms. Hughes Candy's Amendment Number One. Ordinance, page two, line seventy, beginning on line seventy, to strike the words. From issuance of the certificate of occupancy for three years. Ms. Hughes Candies?
Yes.
And Ms. Hale?
No.
Mr. Bryson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
No.
Waha Gidok?
Yes.
And Ms. Trumskon, Madam, Madam Mayor?
No.
And Ms. Gladyshevsky?
Yes. So it's.
Four, four, we have a tie.
Motion fails. Madam, Ms. Hughes Candies, do you have another one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am not sure with the failure of that amendment, whether it makes sense to proceed with the others, as those also. Remove the three years and move to simplify the resolution. So at this point, it looks like the resolution itself might fail. So I will not put forth any other amendments.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion.
Madam, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to make an amendment. Page twenty-six of the ordinance, or excuse me, page two of the ordinance, page twenty-six of the packet. I would like to strike on line seventy. Every. For essentially the first part to read, agree not to rent the apartment as a short-term rental. Period. So strike that from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for three years. And then the default part, and then leave the definition of a short-term rental. So the first, the first sentence would just read, agree not to rent the apartment as a short-term rental. Period, and then the definition.
Okay, so Mr. Smith's Amendment Number Two, making the sentence end after rental. You object? Any discussion? If not, we'll go to the voting. Who wants to? Anybody? Go ahead, Mr. Ms. Madam Mayor.
Otherwise, you're just taking away the teeth of it, and if you don't have it a default, then. You could just do whatever you wanted after you, it was done, so I would object for purposes of that.
All right, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah. Understood. Again, I think this is. I, we have in the past said, you can do short-term rentals, you just will not benefit from public money to do so. We do that on the. Downtown housing abatement, for example. I I hear that we have not decided to regulate short-term rentals, but I think we have kind of said, you can do them, but we're just not gonna give you public money to do so. I think we also need to balance, and I, as I read in the memo and heard from staff, that the time to regulate these thirty. Units, I mean, it's just a lot of work for a little bit of gain. However. I would like for when someone signs up for this program that they have to sign on the line and say, I will not use this as a short-term rental. And we judge it on honor, judge it on that, and move on. That, so that's what the point of my amendment is.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I I'll speak to 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 not striking that language. As someone who has considered adding a short-term rental to my property, it's a complex. Equation and a complex decision. It would involve family members that would possibly rent. And it would involve probably an evolving picture, and I think that's is the case for many people when they are. Not not adding a short-term rental, I'm sorry, just adding an apartment, it would involve an evolving picture, which by necessity, as we all. Live here and age, have evolving pictures. So I, 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 I agree with. Limiting that first three years. I don't agree with limiting it forever because. Life is complex, and we never know what's gonna happen, and we may have a lot of Ironmans showing up and. We have an apartment that's empty and we could rent it for two weeks, so thank you.
Okay, ready for the question?
Well, Madam Mayor.
No, Mr. Mr. Bryson, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have to side with Ms. Hale on this, that the three-year period makes a lot of sense because you're making a plan and you're saying, I'm not going to. This is what my intention is. I wanna build an apartment because I got my mother-in-law to move in, but. Family numbers change all the time, families' issues change, financial pictures change. And to lock people in who have tried to expand their home and not give them financial options to make sure that they can cover it. You know, that could be Plan B. How are you gonna pay for your mother-in-law apartment? Well, the mother-in-law's income's gonna cover that. If it fails. I might need to rent it, and. It's a hard enough thing, and again, every situation is gonna be different for every single individual home, and I think just having a cap at three years and then allowing lives. People's lives to take hold, I think is inappropriate. Thank you for the time.
Okay, we have two more, Waha Gidok.
Yeah, if I could, and and. If Mr. Palmer can correct me if I'm wrong, I would like to offer a friendly amendment, since we're trying to, seems like we're trying to get to a place where we can all agree on this. I would like to offer a friendly amendment that we keep the language of a short-term rental from issuance of the cert certificate of occupancy for three years. And then remove the the remainder of that sentence where it starts and and, and then just ends there at the the word years.
Thank you. We are, that is a different amendment than Mr. Smith asked for, so you could make that the next. That could be Amendment Three. This one doesn't pass.
Point of order, Madam, Madam Mayor, I think I can ask the maker of the motion if he is okay with that amendment.
Mr. Palmer, we don't do that, is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. She can ask Mr. Smith, but Mr. Smith does have a motion on the floor if he chooses to push forward with it.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I'd like to amend my amendment in in the way that. What Shalagiddak proposed, so thank you. I would like to.
What is your amendment?
Yes, now the first sentence would just read, agree not to rent the apartment as a short-term rental from issuance of the certificate of occupancy for three years, period. Striking the the default. Striking the, the default language until the, until the after the grant award part. So striking the second half of that sentence. Page two, line seventy of the ordinance, um, and then leaving the definition of short term rental.
Okay, do we have objection to that?
Objection.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I, I object, I, I think it's fine as it is, I don't think we need to noodle with it, I think it works. It's not like we're saying staff is gonna be chasing down this little six thousand dollar thing right and left, they can or they cannot.
Ms. Hughes Candies.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair, I think I've been clear that I think this does need teeth and, and needs stronger teeth even than it already started with, so.
Okay, um, I would also just say, I think it's good how it is, so, uh, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so this is to amend line seventy on page. Two of the ordinance to state, agree not to rent the apartment as a short term rental for. Issuance of the certificate of occupancy for three years, striking the remainder of that sentence, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Wall.
Yes.
Wallack, Gidok.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes Candies.
No.
Ms. Hale.
No.
Mr. Bryson.
No.
Mayor Weldon.
No.
And Ms. Gladyshevsky.
No.
Motion fails, three A's, five N's.
Any more amendments, or can we go to the main motion? Which is the ordinance as it's written, as Waahagidak introduced it, or moved it. Everybody good? Is there objection to this ordinance as written to move to the assembly? Objection, okay, can, do you wanna speak to it? No, okay, anybody speaking, going once, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, Wallack, Gidok.
Yes.
Ms. Wall.
No.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes Candies.
Yes.
Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mayor Weldon.
Yes.
And Ms. Gladyshevsky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks everybody for going through that, that was a, a two page ordinance that. Was always more complex, relatively two page resolution. Let's not do that with the BOE thing, okay? Okay, excellent, thanks everybody, um, so, um. So now, this is, this next one is a long ordinance that does a, a bunch of things. And the, the goal here is for Mr. Palmer to introduce why it's here, explain what it does, and we're, we're gonna see it again. So, uh, Mr. Palmer.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor, I've got a special guest tonight to introduce to you, Adam Gotchak is coming up. He's one of the Assistant Municipal Attorneys. I owe a debt of gratitude to him. Because he has helped the Board of Equalization through the last two years of process, and I'm not, I'm not taking sides as to. On, on the sides, I'm just super grateful that we have an attorney on our staff on, in the city. That, uh, spent two years with the board and spent a long time with the board, so. Adam is here, Adam walked the, um, walked through this ordinance multiple times. We drafted it maybe a year and a half ago, plus or minus. And the Board of Equalization just looked at it last week, and so. The draft that you have in front of you tonight is the draft that the board would like to see codified. And I'll just speak for a couple moments about it, then hand it over to Adam to kind of give a five minute overview of it. But the big picture here is through the last two years, but also prior. We've realized that the Board of Equalization process could be more clear and could be more transparent, both for taxpayers. Or Board of Equalization members, and for the, uh, any sort of appeal process that goes on from there. And so, we scoured the various municipalities in Alaska. Trying to see how other municipalities do the Board of Equalization process. And we discovered that Anchorage appears to have a really good model, and that's what, uh, this ordinance was drafted off of. We took our existing policies that the Board of Equalization has, so Board of Equalization policies. Codified them and then, uh, adapted them based on what Anchorage has done, because their model seemed to work well. And the ultimate goal here is to make our process transparent. To make the process fair for both the taxpayer and the Port of these Equalization member and the assessor. So, one of the ways that we can significantly change that is by putting all of the BOE appeals. Much faster, uh, in the year, so, right now, we just finished a BOE process, essentially end of September. Taxes are due not far off, and so this, if this gets adopted, the goal would be to see. The Board of Equalization process started and possibly wrapped up by mid-June. So, three to four months faster than we're doing it this year, and it's not a hard requirement, but that's the goal. And then this, the other part that's important is that. We are struggling with the Board of Equalization members, the five members that we currently have are dedicated people of the community that are working really hard. But we have four vacancies. And that's a really big deal, because those five members are shouldering the entire load of the appeal process. And if one of them drops, the Board of Equalization no longer has quorum. And that burden shifts to you as the Assembly to adjudicate all these appeals. And so I think there's a heightened interest to make this process fair, to make this process such that. Community members want to volunteer for the Board of Equalization, and such that those community members. Don't get railroaded through various, um, various processes that may be unfair, both to them. And to the, uh, to the Board of Equalization members, so. I give those opening remarks and then, uh, be happy to hand it over to Mr. Gotchak for five minutes or so of, uh. More summary, and then I think the goal would be to bring this back to the Committee of the Hall. Be probably one of the November meetings, and whether you want to introduce and then bring it back or, uh, to the Committee Hall and then introduction, you have that choice.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gotchak for coming, nice to meet you, and thanks for coming to the Committee of the Hall. Uh, I don't know if you've met all of us, but our names are in front, so. We'll, this is the last time we'll be with the names in front, so, um, you could tell us, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so, uh, many of my points, um, were already made by Mr. Palmer just now. Uh, that this is to increase clarity and transparency, and that this is largely based on the Anchorage model. Um, and yes, there is a shortage right now of BOE members. Uh, so I've just kind of, kind of read through, uh, my little preamble and, uh, kind of hit some of the highlights or more notable changes. Uh, as you can see, there are fourteen pages, um, with changes, so there are quite a few. Uh, so state statute requires the Board of Equalization have rules adopted by ordinance that are consistent with general rules of administrative procedure. The city has these, uh, however, they are pretty old, they predate, uh, state statute, and they are very limited. So as a result, the BOE has long operated using additional procedures it has adopted. Uh, these procedures are consistently included in the appeal packets, which are distributed to parties prior to scheduled appeal hearings, and this is typically a week beforehand. Additionally, the BOE has been relying on guidance from an older CBJ memo, uh, advice from council and an annual training. Which we were not able to have this year, because we were not able to get quorum. So, uh, for the last couple of years, uh, BOE has been at the forefront for many. Uh, and that has prompted consideration of measures that can improve the process for everyone. Uh, so notably, the changes included in this proposed ordinance regard process, they do not change parties' burdens or the scope of BOE. Which come from state statute and case law. Uh, so, yeah, as Mr. Palmer said, last week, the board spent about two hours reviewing, uh, these proposed changes. They suggested about eight or nine additional changes, uh, which are all in the version, uh, proposed and in front of you now. Uh, so there are essentially five guiding aims behind the proposed changes. The first is to codify longstanding BOE procedures, the second is to provide more notice to parties of BOE procedures. The third is to provide more explanation and guidance to appellants, the fourth is to facilitate the BOE's review of the material and relevant issues. And the fifth is to focus hearings and parties' presentations on material and relevant issues. Uh, so, uh, much of what appears new, uh, as Mr. Palmer said, and as I just repeated. Um, is really proposed codification of practice and procedures that have been ongoing for many cycles. Uh, with adjustments intended to bridge gaps and improve the process largely based off of the Anchorage, uh, system that's been working for them. Second, uh, a benefit of the codified rules, uh, as Mr. Palmer, uh, noted earlier. Um, is that they do provide appellants notice. Uh, so as I mentioned before, uh, the practice and procedures are usually included in a packet that's distributed to appellants about a week before the hearing. Uh, by having the code, they're always available. Uh, not only does this give more notice to appellants of what the expectation is and what the process is like. Uh, it also can help potential appellants who may never have been to a BOE appeal, a BOE appeal or never appealed anything. Uh, so that they can understand the process earlier, and they can see that that's a process available to them, and that they don't need to have professional outside representation. Uh, so it gives that kind of clarity, um, and opens it up to others. Um, third, uh, as far as the explanation and guidance, uh, as you can see, sections throughout this. Make more readily apparent, uh, what the process is, so right now, uh, if you were to look in the code, you'll see only a couple sections. In Title fifteen with a really cursory overview of the, uh, BOE process. Um, this is gonna clarify burdens of proof, rules of evidence, uh, evidence that may be considered. Uh, and kind of that back and forth between the assessor and the appellant that happens at each hearing, which is. Generally unknown until the packet is distributed, unless you're a repeat player. Um, and then, as I said, uh, points four and five, just for facilitating review of material and relevant issues. Um, and that just happens through really, uh, highlighting and restating and reaffirming. What the burdens are for appellants who are seeking to, uh, alter or, uh, contest in assessment valuation. Um, so I think probably the biggest specific change in this. Is that it creates an orderly timeline for document and evidence submission. Uh, as Mr. Palmer mentioned, we have had issues finishing on time, I believe taxes are due September thirtieth. The ideal finish date is September fifteenth, this year, even with a far lesser load than last year. Uh, we were not finished till September twentieth. Um, so by having this orderly process, it's essentially thirty days to file a notice with the assessor. Fifteen days to file documents with the assessor, and then there's a back and forth process between the assessor and the appellant for the hearing. Uh, so, uh, as Mr. Palmer was mentioning, an ideal completion date of June thirtieth, or sometime in June, I'm sorry. Um, so that everything can be before. Uh, so we can get the report and everything done by September fifteenth, uh, as, as long stood in our code. Um, it also clarifies advice that we've long been giving appellants, um, such as the unable to comply standard. Uh, regarding late file appeals, um, compensation for BOE members, Anchorage has compensation, some of our other boards, like the Planning Commission. Uh, have compensation, so this will not only incentivize the and reward, uh, and recognize the members who have been serving. Um, this may also help incentivize, uh, people to fill the four empty seats that we currently have. Um, there's a belt and suspenders approach to Title one, Chapter fifty. Uh, reaffirming and clarifying for appellants that that section does not apply. Uh, except we're specifically mentioned to Title fifteen. Uh, there's clarity in voting, um, we found that it's very challenging to have a vote that approves. A denial, um, using Roberts rules, so it creates a default of the assessor's original assessed, uh, valuation. Uh, and I think finally, the last notable change I'll tell you about now is the. Uh, limiting rebuttals to focus on issues raised by the assessor in the first ten minutes. Um, there's often some confusion amongst the appellants, uh, the nature of these, uh, proceedings. In that, they believe that the standard is that they can undermine essentially what an assessor might say. And that that can achieve some sort of sowing of doubt in the members of the BOE, and then they can succeed that way. Um, the standard from state statute and case law is that they have to prove with facts that there's evidence of error. Or, um, a clearly fraudulent process by the assessor, it's not simply. Creating a, a doubt standard and succeeding that way. Um, and there are many other benefits, I'm happy to talk about them, but if you have any questions, happy to answer those as well.
Thank you, that's a good overview, any, what questions do you have right now, Ms. Ms. Hale?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, uh, thank you for this very thorough job, I do have a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned that the BOE spent a couple of hours looking at this and suggested eight or nine changes. I wonder if it's, but I don't think we can see what those eight or nine changes are within the context of this, uh, strikeout type, type of document. I, I would be interested in seeing what those changes were that were suggested by the BOE, and, and the reason for that is. Um, and I'm glad, Ms. Madam Chair, that we have the chance to look at it now, but it, we're gonna be able to come back to it, is. I've heard a lot of concern, uh, about, uh, appellants, from appellants, that they feel like the deck is stacked against them. And the BOE is pretty much just gonna side with the assessor, so I would be really interested to find out. Especially because we're talking about the, the sitting BOE, to find out what those changes were. Um, and I'll, and I'll be really happy to, uh, work with some of the people who have been appellants. And find out if they think this will help them with the process.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Gotchak, you did a fine job to make something that is a little dry, fairly interesting. Um, my question is, we seem to put the burden all on the appellant. Especially on the timeframe, so they have thirty days and then fifteen days, but there's never any. Um, timeframe on the city or the assessor to say, you have to respond within so much time. Because with the year that we had two hundred or whatever it was, I don't think that was the appellant's fault that we were so behind schedule, I think it was our fault.
Mr. Gotchak.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Mayor, um, so, the burden is on the appellant, um, just by state statute. As far as the time scheduling, uh, I wouldn't consider the, uh, first thirty days that they have to file the notice of appeal. In addition to the additional fifteen days in which there's that information exchange and submission to the assessor. Uh, this does contemplate that there's a back and forth with the assessor, and the assessor can waive. Um, that deadline as well, uh, so that they can continue to exchange information, because that. Uh, seems to be, I guess, I, I don't have a lot of behind the scenes with the assessor, uh, due to our, our kind of separations of roles. Uh, but it seems like there is a fair bit of back and forth, um, even after documents are initially submitted and notices are initially filed.
Let me just follow up on the mayor's thing about time, timing is. Um, you say that this is a cod- basically a codification of what you already do, but then you say these time things, so. Along that line, who was responsible for the delay in these things, was it the assessor not getting back, or the people not, not? Submitting their stuff in time, or, or the full amount of stuff that's required. The thirty day thing was always true, right, you had to appeal within thirty days, that's not new, right?
Uh, the thirty day is longstanding, yes.
Yeah, but then, these other deadlines, is that what they, they did now, or they did not do that, so that's new? Because, because again, you said this is just codifying what you already do, and but, so it's obviously not everything we've already do.
That's correct, Madam Chair, so it's codifying what we already do, and additionally, uh, instituting or. Codifying, uh, certain procedures that will add more order. Um, so we do, uh, this, the stuff such as the evidence standards, unable to comply, the fifteen minutes. That is longstanding, uh, the timeframe that it's creating between the appellants and the assessor, that is new.
Okay, and then, to, again, to Madam Mayor's question, who, during the last time when it took so long. Who was being late, the people or us? Do we need more assessor, assessor staff, or do you know the answer to that?
So I, some of it, I, I do not know, um, I know that there was probably a little bit of, um, blame to go around. So it's difficult to get boards to meet, it's difficult, because we, um, had a, a bit of back and forth with an attorney representing many of. Those appellants as to what was going to happen, um, and figuring out exactly how we would proceed with those appeals.
Okay, um, thank you, I, sorry, Mr. Smith, I, I see your hand now, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, um.
I had a question on the 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 stipend. I I appreciate the support for them. I was just, I just have no sense of how many hearing, how many meetings they had. So I guess, do we have an estimate of what this, you know, what this, what the increase in cost would be if we were paying each BOE member a hundred dollars per meeting?
Oh, is that, I was, Mi- Mr. Kachak.
Uh, thank you, Benham Chair and Mr. Smith. So, uh this past cycle, I believe there were seven hearings. Um possibly eight if you include September twentieth uh as one. So if you have three members, you're looking at about twenty-one, twenty-five hundred dollars or so.
Um, Ms. Hale. Oh, Mr. Smith, are you done?
I I have another question, but it's not a follow-up, so I can go back to the end of the line.
No, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Uh, on the, I guess, so the BOE, I guess I was trying to get, does the B, has the BOE unanimously said they support these changes?
Mr. Gotchak.
That is correct because there are only five of them. Uh they need to be unanimous about it, everything uh besides.
Ms. Hale.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, just to follow up. And uh, you know, I want to be careful that I'm not trying to pick on the BOE. But I, I do think the question that I asked was, could we see what those changes were from the BOE? So we had, can have a sense, and I don't know if I got an answer.
Oh, sorry, I I assumed you were going to, you were going to give us tha- that at some point, Mr. Palmer.
I will be glad to give that to you, possibly even tomorrow.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean it. Anybody else have questions right now? We were gonna go on and read this. Oh, go ahead, Mi- Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I I'm glad we, of course, we showed to the, showed to the BOE. I wonder if it would be appropriate to send some of these proposed changes out to people who have appealed in, say, the last couple of years to see what their thoughts are in the change of procedure, just to get, I don't know if you call it the other side, but to hear people who have gone through the process and to see what they think that would have done in terms of their work. Ju- can we email them and then they can choose to, you know, send you guys a letter and then they can, the next time we hear it.
Comments on that. Go ahead, Mr. Palmer.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Smith. That's part of the goal with the two-step with this committee is to kind, in concept, present this now, kind of introduce it now, and then bring it back to the committee such that members of the public, especially those that have been active in the BOE, have an opportunity to look at tonight's packet and provide us comments.
Seems like public notice, our meeting, it's all here. Have you reached out to any individuals like, hey? No, that's not how, okay. Um, that's not what we do. Okay, okay.
Yep, yep, I guess just on that, um, I, well, I it it's, not everyone pays attention to all of our meeting and packet and agendas and blah, blah, blah. So that's why I'm, in some cases, I think it may be prudent to have a more targeted outreach to those who participated. It sounds like Mr. Palmer is going to do that, but then there was some, I couldn't tell for what you said if that's going to happen.
Not what he, that's not what he said. Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, thank you. So, Mr. Smith, if you have individuals, constituents that you know are super interested, please refer them to this packet. I think that's probably the best way to go forward, or if you interact with people over the next month, six weeks, please refer them to this packet. And then uh we would uh really appreciate all feedback. And then whether we introduce this next or send it to the committee of the whole again next, I I don't think that really matters because we want the feedback and that's why we have a a long delay on this one.
Thank you. Any more comments about this, uh information you need? Thank you for the overview and explaining it, and um we'll see you again. Thank you very much. Okay, one, one final thing. Um off-street parking management. Uh we have some super old parking management from the nineties that um staff would like to upgrade to the twenty-first century. Mr. Barr.
Thank you, um, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, not unlike the BOE rules, uh this, this topic is a little bit in its infancy. There is no doubt in my mind that it will come back before you. We are just starting thinking about this, uh although we've, we've thought about it for some time, uh but but we're, we're getting back to it. And this was actually on a draft agenda uh pre-COVID, um and then COVID happened. So, uh what what is before you is a memo on off-street parking, although it does talk a little bit about on-street parking uh towards the end of it. It is specific to parking management downtown. Um currently, our Parks and Rec Department manages two parking garages, the Downtown Transportation Center and the uh Marine Parking Garage, as well as two parking lots. The uh, the way we do uh daily uh payment for parking at all four of those facilities and the way we do monthly and annual permit uh permits in those facilities is uh painful and cumbersome and manual, uh requires quite a bit of staff time and quite a bit of um unnecessary uh action uh by the member of the public seeking uh parking that is just out of step with with current um current life in this industry. Uh so we, we intend here to um contract uh to put out a a request for proposals or something like that, request for professional services uh with a uh that a, that a major parking vendor would, would bid on um to provide the same type of um both daily and uh monthly, annual-based parking um services in our off-street parking garages and lots downtown. Again, that would, that would come back before you, uh before we finalized anything. It would also be helpful, I think, for us to hear if you uh have thoughts about charging for on-street parking, um because any solution that we pursue for off-street parking um would need to take that into account. Um if at some point down the road, we, we might pursue charging for on-street parking as well. Uh, we, we are sensitive to the fact that we uh had a failed parking project about ten years ago. Um, we don't want to repeat that. We uh are not excited about a scope of work that includes off and on-street all at once. We'd like to be narrow uh about focusing on off-street parking to begin. Um but that doesn't mean that we can't be thinking about the potential um for on-street uh after the fact down the road. So I think that's what I have, happy to, happy to take questions and and particularly interested in hearing your um your thoughts on this topic.
So the first thing is about off-street parking and the management of the, of the lots that are ancient. Um, my understanding is this is, would be paid for with parking funds. They're asking for money at this point. It's just the question of, you know, is everybody ready to upgrade the parking garage management? Does anyone have any problem with not having the little dollar bill thing, you know? Anyway, so that's the first question. Mr. Bryson, Ms. Wa- Ms. Wong.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, Mr. Barr, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought that and I thought I heard this information at my Public Works and Facilities meeting, that we're doing a parking analysis next or in the next year.
Mr. Barr.
Mr. Bryson, I um, I, when you said that during Public Works and Facilities Committee meeting, I, I too was like, we are? Um and I couldn't, I couldn't track that down. I tried, but I haven't asked everyone who I need to ask yet about that, but that isn't, that is not my recollection. That doesn't mean it's not true, though.
We may want to check in with the Director Kester for when her intention of to do a parking analysis. So that leads me to my next part of my question. Wouldn't it make a tremendous amount of sense to get a thorough current parking analysis done before and and then make the decisions or at least get a little bit more information? Or do you need us to move forward on this right now?
Mr. Barr.
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I think that we need to change the way we manage off-street parking regardless of what we may or may not learn in a parking study. Um doesn't, doesn't mean that a larger study might not also be valuable and productive. Um but the, the type of system that we imagine replacing our current um practices with uh would, would likely be the same uh regardless of the outcome of that study.
So this is a slightly different topic. We're not trying to solve all of downtown. We're just trying to figure out how to collect money for the off-street parking in an efficient manner. Thank you.
Mi- Madam Mayor, you had a question.
Sure, and Mr. Smith has a question. Oh, oh.
Oh, Ms. Wong, sorry. I apologize. Go ahead.
Forgot to write it down. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I was just excited because I've been waiting for this day since I joined the Assembly. This is very exciting. Um, so I'm ready. Um, I have two questions. Um, the first is there's a statement in here, we expect the implementation of a electronic system to be close to cost neutral or potentially actually cost neutral. When you say cost neutral, do you mean in compared with what we currently have or actually cost neutral?
Good question. Uh, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, um, through the chair. Uh, I, I mean compared with what we currently have. And I would be, I would be thrilled if it ended up being cost neutral compared to what we currently have. Um although you'll note my hedging in the memo uh about that maybe not end up, ending up as reality, but that's our goal.
Okay, we have Madam Mayor and Mr. Smith.
Ms. Wong just asked my question.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Barr, would, it might be cost neutral, wou- would we expect any changes enough to where current CBG, CBJ staff members would lose their jobs?
Mr. Barr.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. No, I I would not anticipate that. The uh, the CBJ staff members that we, that we have managing parking right now would uh likely be necessary to manage that parking contract. Um, we currently contract for quite a bit of services uh in our parking garages and in in our lots. Um, so we would no longer uh have some of those, those uh contracting services that we would, that we would uh change who the contractor was. Um but I don't anticipate it impacting city employees.
Okay.
And, and another one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Would any, would duties being performed by CBJ employees then, would, would any of them shift to a, a contractor?
Mr. Barr.
Um, through the chair, uh, Mr. Smith, some, yes. So an example of that would be right now, um CBJ employees um manually print and and laminate uh all of the thousands of parking permits that we issue every year. Um, that, that would shift to an electronic process, um that the software provided by a contractor would, would provide. So, so that's, that's probably the, the biggest example that I can come up with, but there, there are some smaller ones.
Okay.
That's a big one. Thank you.
Yeah, this is about the off-street parking, getting a more modern machine. And basically, Duxton Harbors already has some and there, there are lots. They have a lot more simpler parking things. That's just all short-term. Mr. Barr has legislative permits and all kinds of permits, and it's just more complicated. So it's, it's going to be maybe a different solution. So I don't hear any objection to that. Good questions. The, the more complicated question is about on-street parking. We're not prepared to go into it in a big way. Here, um, been talking about parking for ever. So, but um any, what's the general sense about this? And uh everybody could talk once. Uh, Ms. Ms. Hale. Miss Hughes Candies.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think this is great. Um, and I actually am also kind of eager for uh some kind of conversation, perhaps along the lines of what Mr. Bryson was talking about in terms of parking analysis. You know, I talked to people who worked on to move their car every two hours and it's just a nightmare. And when I have to do it, it's kind of a nightmare too. Um, so so a- and I also have observed the cars in the parking garage with an inch of dust on them because that's cheaper for them to park their car in the parking garage than it is to find a place elsewhere. And I think that's just a travesty. So anyway, I, I'm eager for that conversation, that kind of conversation as well. Obviously, not now.
Right on. Um, Miss Hughes Candies.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just, uh, I remember the first time they talked about, um, Mr. Schaeff. It's I think we've got it backwards, so I just want staff to put that capability in there and then we can talk about it more detailed later, but it seems kind of we want to incentivize people to do that and then charge them to park right in front of their place. Makes sense to me.
Exactly. Who most, uh, um, any other comments at this point? We're going to talk about this. Everybody's over it. I'll, I'll just say, repeat what Miss Hughes Canyon says. You have to make it incentivize people to park in the parking lot by making it charged on the street in some way so that people can just drive up to their coffee store and park if they want to pay. So, and that's what the city tried to do a decade ago and failed miserably. Picked the wrong horse and uh maybe this time we could pick a better horse. Um, you know, anybody more on this? Okay. Um, any other thing to come before this committee at this time, Mr. Barr, Mr. Palmer? Anybody else want to say, like, something's canceled or anything?
Great job, Deputy Mayor.
I, I don't want to say anything. Any, any more news about the landslide?
Everybody in recovery.
Thank you, um, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just, just a couple of quick things. So we, we've confirmed, we do not, we still do not believe anyone was injured. Um, there was some damages to, there was some damage to two housing, to two houses on Gastonoe Avenue. We um, we are asking residents to stay away from the impacted area. Um, we don't uh anticipate being able to clear away enough of the debris until daylight. Um, and and clearing away enough debris is necessary before AELNP can restore power um to, to, um, to everyone that's, that's being impacted by loss of power. Um, we're, we're working on pushing out an information release. Um, um, it's unfortunate that we haven't got one out by now. The, the power outage that we had in City Hall actually impacted our ability to do that. Um, but we are doing that now and um will, of course, be sharing more information um as uh, as, as we know more. Uh, we're, we're currently not aware of any more slides other than the one, although we, we are expecting um significant rainfall over the next eighteen hours, uh and that risk uh exists.
And uh, Wal Khagidah, if you had a question or comment.
Yeah, I just, before we go, Friday is Orange Shirt Day in honor of all of those who have survived and have been um lineal descendants of survivors of, of boarding and residential school. So if you can't make it to Gastonoe Elementary at five o'clock on Friday, then maybe you can wear an orange shirt um in honor of that day.
Thank you. Can I, I'll, I'll ask you a question since, um, there were two events, I think, scheduled. One was said education, one said something else. Do you know about the difference between those two by, by any chance? No, okay, I just wondered. Um, thank you for mentioning that. Anybody else? Then we adjourned. Thank you. Good mea- oh, see, I almost did it, Mr. Smith. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, in the past, the education event has been like educating people on the issue and talking more about the history where I, I think that the event on Friday night on the thirtieth is more in kind of observation of it. If I, that, if that makes sense.
Okay, uh, Madam Mayor has have come something.
Uh, since we're talking about uh community news, um, we, the aware is having their totem raising at Twin Lakes at noon on Saturday.
Thank you. Um, all right, we are, I'm going to hit it this time. Thanks. We're adjourned.